My name is Lori Connors and I'm Northborough's Planning Director.
And I'm John Campbell with the Master Plan Implementation Committee. We're here today to talk about the Downtown Northborough Streetscape Improvement Project, which is on the Town Meeting Warrant this year. And we'd like to educate everyone on what this project entails and show you some images of what we hope it can be. So in 2020, the town issued its master plan. And in the citizen feedback and reviews of that plan, the number one thing that came out is that people were looking to enhance the downtown area and try to make it a more pleasing place where people could gather, whether it be visitors or residents alike. And that's really the goal of this initiative and what we hope will be the first of many initiatives to beautify our downtown. The scope of this project is along what we know as Blake Street, from Main Street toward Pierce Street behind it and around the corner to where it intersects with Hudson Street. So currently, as you may know, there's a large parking lot area that actually consists of a municipal parking lot area, as well as parking for the businesses down at the far end, the restaurant, as well as the doggie den. And then around the corner, there's actually a small park, which personally, I never really noticed until I started looking close. So we're looking to enhance this whole region from Main Street around to, again, Pierce and Hudson Street and make it an area more attractive to visitors.
So the project's scope, once again, includes these areas. So as you can see in this photo, we have some significant improvements that are proposed to the Pocket Park. There is a proposed seating wall around the flagpole, a proposed fence to cut off access to the railroad tracks. There is improvements proposed to the current perpendicular parking lot on Blake Street. So right now, the configuration is nose-in, and the proposal is to make it more angled parking. Over by 4 West Main Street, there is proposed seat walls, which would echo some seating walls that are proposed for the Christmas Tree Park. There is a new sidewalk with a brick edge, some bike racks, because of course, we're interested in making this area more attractive to bicyclists as well as pedestrians. We are interested in adding trash receptacles, a new pergola, which would provide some shade. We want to retain existing street trees, but also add a number of new street trees. So this proposal adds 14 new street trees throughout the project's scope. We're interested in redoing the municipal parking lot and adding drainage. I'm sure many of you have noticed the huge puddles that regularly form in the municipal parking lot. So what we're trying to do is add drainage where there is none currently. So we are proposing to add a bio-swell, which is a green infrastructure feature that uses nature to capture and infiltrate stormwater. And this bio-swell will include some attractive plantings. Our project proposal includes a brand-new sidewalk that doesn't currently exist along the east side of Blake Street. And one of the rationales for that is that we really want to kind of define the driveways along Blake Street. There are vast openings. The opening to the driveway for the municipal parking lot and 10 Blake Street, or the Fettuce Restaurant, is approximately 150 feet in width. So we want to define that access better and make it easier for pedestrians to walk along Blake Street. We're also interested in adding a new sidewalk along Pierce Street and, once again, enhancing the War Memorial Park with some new walkways and some benches. So just a little bit of history of Blake Street. You really can't talk about Blake Street without talking about the railroad. It's been so pivotal to the formation of our downtown, as well as the businesses along Blake Street. So the railroad came to Northborough in 1853, and a number of businesses that dealt with bulk and also grain ended up opening up along Blake Street. Of course, we also had a passenger depot, a freight depot, as well as storage for the railroad. So these are some of the prominent businesses that existed along Blake Street back in the day. We had the Whittaker and Proctor Button Factory, the C Brigham and Company Store, as well as a creamery. The Engine House eventually ended up being converted into Northborough Lumber, and that business existed at the site for nearly 100 years. So here are some images of the buildings that exist along Blake Street today. Many of these buildings are the same as the ones that appeared in the prior slide. But of course, the businesses have changed over quite a bit. Today, we have a number of apartments, most prominently 31 Blake Street, which is a 12-unit garden-style apartment building. And then we have some other really well-known businesses, including Sawyer's Bolladrome, which is a beloved business here in Northborough. We also have the Fettuce Restaurant and the Doggie Den. Just a little bit of, you know, pointing out some of the existing conditions. This is a view of Blake Street from its intersection with Route 20. One thing that you can see from this picture is how meandering the width of the roadway is. At its widest point, Blake Street is approximately 50 feet wide, and that is where you see the perpendicular parking. And then at its narrowest point, it's about 22 feet wide. Here are some pictures of what people often call the Christmas Tree Park. So this is where the beloved Christmas tree is standing, and of course, every year, there's the annual Christmas tree lighting. So that Christmas tree was dedicated to a soldier who lost his life during the Vietnam War. But some other images show some of the other features that exist in this Christmas Tree Park. We have the Lions Club Electronic Message Center. We have a flagpole. We have a small seating area and a walkway and some landscaping. What this picture, I think, really illustrates quite well is that the park is in some need of love. I'm sure it was quite beautiful back in its day, its heyday, but it's looking tired today. The electronic message center is broken. It's been broken for many, many months now. I understand from my conversation with the Lions Club that they're having a difficult time finding parts, and they are also prohibitively expensive. So really, it's time to replace or find another solution for that electronic message center. The seating wall, you can see in this image, is falling apart, as well as the walkway. And you can see that we have some unsightly utilities. Definitely could be a more attractive solution to lighting the Christmas Tree Park. Here are some images of the municipal parking lots next to that park. You can see that there is significant puddling that occurs on a regular basis in one of the municipal parking lots, and that is because, as I mentioned previously, there is no drainage currently. So when snow melts and when it rains, the water just stays there until it naturally evaporates into the air. You can see that the pavement in the municipal parking lot is heaving and significantly cracked in many locations. And then we also have some lovely donation boxes, and that's not really the best image for the town to portray. Here are some images of the sidewalk situation. So down Blake Street, we have multiple different types of sidewalk within just one section of roadway. So at 4 West Main Street, we have a six-foot-wide concrete sidewalk with a vertical granite curb. That's kind of the bar that we're looking to reach. That was replaced during the Route 20 Improvement Project. But then, as you go over by Sawyer's Bolladrome, it switches to asphalt, and there's either no berm at all to separate the sidewalk from the roadway, or there's a minimal amount of berm. So this isn't ideal because there's no protection for pedestrians who are walking along the walkway. And also, it's a clear invitation for those who want to park along Blake Street that they can just park on the sidewalk. And then lastly, you see the sidewalk configuration in front of 31 Blake, where you have a grass strip that separates the asphalt sidewalk. So ideally, what you would like to see in such a small area, this roadway is only about 500 linear feet. So the ideal situation for aesthetic reasons and also for drainage purposes and for public safety is to have one type of sidewalk along the entire length, as well as consistent berm. So then, as we get to Pierce Street, we have no sidewalk at all. So if you were to turn left on Pierce Street from Blake Street, there is an asphalt sidewalk, but if you turn right, there's no sidewalk. And of course, you're passing over railroad tracks, and then further down the road is a municipal parking lot associated with the War Memorial Park. It would be great if there was a sidewalk along this stretch, because of course, there are a number of neighborhoods. And what we really want to do is encourage people to walk downtown. So providing them with a safe ADA-accessible sidewalk is ideal.
So what are our goals? One of the main ones is to present a streetscape area and an atmosphere that would attract new businesses. This would encourage investment, private investment, and also encourage more visitors and more residents to walk downtown, as Lori just mentioned. But at the same time, we really want to beautify our downtown. So we want to make it a place that our citizens can be proud of and that visitors would want to go to, or certainly would make note of, hey, Northborough's looking much better. Lori spoke a lot about the disjointed parking areas that we have and the condition of them. So we want to try to raise awareness that the parking can be enhanced, we can make it easier to pull in and park, which again encourages visitors. Lori mentioned some of the climate-friendly initiatives that are part of the project, and you know, we think this is very important in today's day and age. If we're going to do the project, we should make it as environmentally friendly as possible and as sustainable as possible. At the same time, looking to enhance public safety, that being from the new sidewalks that were mentioned, as well as just again, if you are pulling in, if you are looking to park, that we make it convenient, try to eliminate the possibility of, you know, any interference, and just make that a better flow, let's put it that way. And finally, make the stormwater and snow runoff work better, not impact the new additions that we've made, which is again, just good practice for any new road type construction that we would do. So we're going to show you a series of images, and these were created by the Beta Group Consultants that is working with the town on the proposed project. This is a view looking sort of from above down Blake Street, where the new Pocket Park would be on your right, showing the flag, the Christmas Tree area just behind it, and the gathering area with the pergola behind that, that we'll show a close-up of soon. More of a street-level view, again, where you're coming into Blake. We have the crosswalk there, and again, you've got the enhanced Pocket Park in the front, and you can see how it flows nicely sidewalk-wise, coming down into the area. This view would be if you had, say, walked to the middle of Blake and were looking across and looking back. You're looking back toward Main Street, back toward the Pocket Park and the flag, and you can see the gathering pergola area in the middle. Here's a view as if you were, in fact, sitting in this nice area. You've got a place to sit, gather, read, work, really kind of the centerpiece of this whole area now, where, you know, we're really looking at this as an attractive area for people to come. A different view, looking back again down Blake, just the addition of new street trees, lamps, and sidewalking really enhances this area. This view would be if you were on Pierce, coming into Blake. Again, you can see new sidewalks. The white buildings on the left of this image are just depicting placeholders for what the existing buildings are. And here, another view, looking along Blake, if you were looking back toward Main, you can see the great sidewalk access. The parking is much more organized. The streetscape trees and features make it really attractive.
And just one other thing I wanted to point out is this picture presents a great view of the bio-swell that I was talking about. So this is a modern feature that's used in development projects more frequently today, and it replaces your typical catch basin to pipe to detention basin configuration. It really isn't all that attractive and certainly doesn't have much of a place in an urban environment. So as you can see here, there are some attractive plantings, there are grasses, and those actually work to infiltrate the stormwater into the ground. So this is a way of adding green into a downtown environment, but also making it beautiful. So I thought that I would spend a minute talking about another example of a downtown revitalization project that I was personally involved in. Prior to my arrival in the town of Northborough three years ago, I worked for 16 years for the town of Millbury, and I was involved in a two-phase downtown revitalization effort that cost approximately $5 million. The first phase went under construction in 2020, and the second phase wrapped up in 2023. It was a very extensive project that covered approximately half of the downtown area, and it really had significant impacts to the downtown. So these are some of the pictures of some of the improvements that were made by that project. But also, I wanted to include some photos of some of the buildings that did significant facade improvements during the period of time or after the period of time that the streetscape project was done. And the reason for that is I wanted to really bring home the fact that a downtown streetscape project often has a ripple effect or a domino effect. And it gets the property owners, the private property owners, super excited. They see that the downtown is being spruced up, that obviously, the town itself thinks highly of the downtown and wants to promote a sense of pride. They want to invest some money in ensuring that the downtown looks good, and that often encourages private property owners to do the same. So in this case, when this project was originally proposed back in 2018-2019 timeframe, downtown Millbury was grappling with a large number of commercial vacancies and also having issues with trash. So people were just throwing cigarette butts out the window and just random trash, and the area just looked gross. But all that changed, and so previously vacant storefronts ended up filling up with exciting new businesses, including the Spicy Water Distillery, Penny Pincher's Brewery, and the Micanose Cafe and Bakery. There are a number of other examples of great businesses that have opened up shop in the last four to five years. I just wanted to give you a sampling. And the other exciting thing is 11 private property owners invested significant funds into making facade improvements. So now, truly, the downtown has been transformed, and you can see that by the level of activity throughout the downtown at all hours of the day, day and night. So I encourage folks, if you want to see a success story, to drive 20, 25 minutes over the town of Millbury and see what that looks like.
Thank you, Lori. Yes, I've been to Millbury, and it really reminds you of other local communities you go to that you see, hey, they've maintained the character of the town while enhancing it tremendously. So why do this in Northborough now? Well, one reason is we've been talking about it for so long that it's starting to get old. So really, it goes back to our 1988 master plan, and as I say, has been a major initiative of our 2020 master plan. Key to this whole area, though, is the 4 West Main Street building that some call the Old Town Hall, and it is an opportunity, okay? Love it or not, it's there as an anchor to this area. And as the town looks for opportunities to attract new businesses or looks for other uses for this building, it's going to get utilized in some way, and it will be part of this area growing. If we do this initiative now in the streetscaping, it's much easier to get this done before this building gets busier and before more traffic comes into this area, as opposed to the other way around. So the timing is really critical for that. Inflation is another factor. We're all sick of hearing about it, but let's face it, construction costs continue to rise, so every year we delay could increase the cost of the project. But more importantly, grant opportunities that Lori is pursuing and that we expect to fund 50% of this project, they could go away next year with change in state government funding and so on. So the opportunities are there now, and we believe they're very applicable to this project. If we pass this article at Town Meeting and the town agrees to contribute its portion, some of it will need to be funded by debt, and that could affect taxpayers by only about $17 per average household. So it's not a lot of money. We recognize it still is a raise in taxes, but it's a really good investment.
So in summary, as I mentioned with the Millbury project, an important thing here to keep in mind is the domino effect. So of course, we just talked about the cost to the taxpayers, but I expect that there will be a significant domino effect that will impact the abutting properties. Like I said, we will likely have new businesses that will occupy our vacant storefronts. We will have additional jobs in our downtown area, and that will create more vibrancy and a more successful downtown. And typically, private investment in building facade improvements and signage increases the property values of the abutting properties, so that often translates into additional tax revenue for the town. So just a little bit about the project timeline. We are now, of course, in spring 2025. This project is still in design. We anticipate holding another community outreach workshop, so that'll be our second one. The first one was held on February 26 at the Public Library. The second one will likely be held in May. And then, of course, as John mentioned, I'm working hard on applying for grants so that we can fund a large portion of this project with other means, instead of asking the taxpayers to pay all of it. During the summer of 2025, we will have to apply for a land disturbance and stormwater management permit from the Conservation Commission, so that will happen at that time. Once that permit is secured, we will work with the Beta Group to finalize the design, and the final plans, of course, will be presented to the townspeople at a select board meeting. In fall of '25, the bid specifications will be finalized. In the winter, we hope to release the bid and secure a construction contractor. And then, if everything works well, we hope that the contractor will be ready to go in April of 2026. I anticipate that substantial construction will take about nine months to complete. So costs, of course, are what everybody is concerned about, and I totally understand why. So this isn't a cheap project. So we have already secured funding for the design and the preparation of bid specifications. So that cost was $202,000. The Board of Selectmen allocated ARPA funds for this purpose. I anticipate that the construction costs will be approximately $2.1 million. Of course, as the design advances, that number may change. We would need to hire the Beta Group to do some construction oversight. That price tag will probably be in the neighborhood of $190,000, but the good news is we already have some of that funded. We did receive an economic development earmark of $30,000, and as I mentioned, we also secured some ARPA funding from the Select Board, so that defrays $78,000 of the construction oversight costs. So the total price tag is just shy of $2.5 million, and of that amount, we have $280,000 secured to date. So how are we going to pay for the balance? So the balance is about $2.2 million. This spring, I will be submitting a complete streets construction grant application for $500,000. Next Friday, I will be submitting an MVP action grant application in the amount of $612,000. And then the balance, we are hoping to fund at Town Meeting. So that would be $1.1 million. So there is an article that will appear on the warrant, and so we certainly hope to get the support of the townspeople to finally, after 36 years of having this as a top priority, to revitalize the downtown, to finally make this a reality.
So so far, this has really been a great team effort that Lori has coordinated. The Beta Group Consultants, as she mentioned, have already been funded, and they're responsible for producing the plans and the images that we showed today, and they still support the town on this. And in addition, Lori gathered an excellent focus group. This includes town staff, as well as local property owners and other citizens on the Master Plan Committee and Planning Board, contributing through the focus. So in summary, we encourage you to reach out for more information. Call or email Lori, as you see here, elconnors@town.northborough MA.us, or call the Town Hall. You can also go on the town website, and is it under the planning?
It's under the Planning Department. There is a webpage devoted to downtown revitalization. It's called a Phase 1 Project, so just click on that button, and it'll bring you to all sorts of information. Like I had mentioned, we had a community outreach workshop on February 26, so there is a link to a recording of that workshop. There's also the presentation slides. We have the meeting minutes from our focus group meetings, and we have a lot of other great information, and we are updating that webpage on a regular basis, so please check it out.
And thank you for listening to this presentation today. We encourage you to, again, learn more about the project, get behind it, get excited. It really is an excellent opportunity to create the first phase in beautifying downtown and create a safer, more convenient, more attractive place to call home in your town. Thank you. Thank you.